Hello, everyone. We call the Select Board meeting to order today, Tuesday, March 28th, at 7:04 PM. A motion to open the meeting?
So may it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky?
Here.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Here.
Mr. Carrara?
Here.
And I'm here too. I asked if you are able to stand to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to inform you that Town Manager Coulter is here.
Well, I'm so glad to see that's what he looks like. Okay, now we know. Thank you. In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16th, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public board and town meetings and recently extended until March 30th, 2023, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed via at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible. After the meeting, if the live broad stream or live streaming is unsuccessful, times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. At this time, I would like everyone to know that item number 12, Urban Renewal Plan Prioritized Version Information Exchange, will be tabled, but I'll delegate to Vice Chair Cavie to give an update as to why.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. I asked this to be tabled for tonight. There's some information that we just received that needs to be synthesized and sort of put into this document, and this is at the request of the SRA. So I'd like to honor that request, give them a chance to update the documentation, and then we'll present on that.
Everything, thank you very much, Vice Chair Cavie. Everything else is as stated on the document. First, let's start with Select Board comments or any comments from the Select Board? I could do Select Board at the end of the meeting. Okay. Okay. Vice Chair Cavie?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like to start by offering my personal condolences to six victims, again, that were murdered in a senseless school shooting, and it's time that our country wakes up. And when we can't send our kids to school and they don't have to worry about being gunned down and everybody says they've got plans and this shouldn't happen, you know, there's a lot of people that I know feel strongly about certain gun rights, but when gun rights are being abused and people are dying, 129 in 2023 alone is unacceptable. I want to know, for whatever way I can find out, as one of the five highest executive-level positions in the town, whatever we have to do, I want to know if our schools are safe. I would like to know what is in place, that our schools are protected from this. We all hear in these senseless stories of these senseless murders and, you know, it just, I can't put it into any common sense at all, but I don't want to be sitting at this table and hear, "We thought we were all set." I want to know what's going on. I know this is something that we can't publicize, but again, there must be a way that we can go into executive session for that. If it's something that is deemed to be, you know, hurtful to the town, I don't know, but I want to know through you, Mr. Town Manager, are we prepared? Have we done everything? And if the answer is no, we should be coming in with some kind of security plans and funding mechanisms to get to town meeting immediately, even if we have to call a special within the annual and we have to spend money. We're going to have to do that. There's too many people that have buried children that does not make a sense at all in the world we live in. It's getting worse, not better. You know, it just, I just want to know, in my position, I want to know, are we prepared? If not, what do we do to be prepared to the best of our ability? So that's all I've got to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We aren't going to meet again. I don't know if I'll be here again, but this is, what's wrong with that? It's better.
Yes, sir.
Here we go again. The election is next Tuesday. I hope everybody gets out and votes. That's the important thing. Who they vote for is their business. But I guess I have this microphone right this moment, so I guess I'd like to just make a short announcement, and that is that Saturday, the 8th of April, there'll be an auction to sell the farm equipment at the McNamara Farm. It's Stotan's last remaining farm, in business for well over a century and three generations. From my point of view, I guess, as a relative in-law of that family and a neighbor, I'm a little bit distressed by that, of course. My brother-in-law, Charles, who's my age, has essentially run that farm since he graduated from UMass. He's been active in the Farm Bureau all of his life, and like all farmers, he's worked very, very hard, as is his family when they lived at home. Perhaps a piece that we may not know about is his father, his father and my wife's father, Charles Senior, had the farm before him, and Charles Senior was appointed as the Massachusetts Commissioner of Agriculture for three governors, Republicans and Democrats, serving for 12 years in the 50s and 60s. The longest-serving agriculture commissioner, aside from the first commissioner, probably established sometime in the 1850s. So I just wanted to pass that along. It's sort of the end of an era for farming in the town, and that's a big change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gito. Yes, said, I agree. To my fellow board members and to Town Manager, I wanted to ask, did you get a chance to read the email from the MBTA regarding their capital improvement plan? Okay. Now, what that is to our citizens, it's their five-year infrastructure budget, and I don't know if you recall, but I am on that board. I sit on the MBTA Advisory Board, so that budget has not come to us for review. I am hands-on with the MBTA operational budget. Now, that's a $2 billion budget. The capital improvement plan is a $9.2 billion budget. The Executive Director of the MBTA Advisory Board offered to come to one of our meetings if we would like and discuss that budget. The Advisory Board won't see it until April 7th, but our next Select Board meeting is the 5th, April 5th. So if you would like that to happen, I can send out an invitation to him. Just let me know. I think it would be helpful to understand a $9.2 billion budget, because he's asking everyone for input. And that's all I have. We can move right along now to Town Manager comments.
I'm good, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move right along to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? Checked online, that being none. Let's go to item number five, Consent Agenda Items. A, oh, I thought Peter Ventresco had something to say. Consent Agenda Item, it's, A is Approval of Open Session Meeting Minutes for April 21, 2023, and Select Board Vote of Fiscal Year 24 Budget Addbacks. Does anyone want to pull any one or both of those items?
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull item number, letter B.
Item B for discussion.
And A, just for correction, which I already gave.
Okay. So let's do A first. Okay?
There's just a correction on page two.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gito, can you push through?
I really should do that, shouldn't I?
Well, I can hear you perfectly, but the people in the back cannot.
On page two, there's a correction in one of the names. I think it's the second or third paragraph, last line, and I've given that to Gilda.
Okay. Great.
What was that name again?
Gregory. Gregory White?
Yeah. Mr. Gregory White. Mr. Gregory, hold just a minute, I'll pull it up.
Okay.
I'll have it here in a second. Pocraskas, 318 Prospect Street.
Okay. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Cavie?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just want to understand some of the ins and outs of this. I see a couple of accounts being debited and others being credited. I guess my two questions are, well, I guess, the first one is I notice that we come up with a surplus of about 1, 2.136 million, which is on the last page. I think the last time we did this, it was closer to like 60,000. So I'm just trying to understand where this extra 2 million plus is coming from.
Mr. Rowe is not with us. I can speak to the details of every, Mr. Cavie, can you match it? I can speak to the details of every debit and every credit with respect to the surplus. It's not 2.136. It is approximately 60,000. I saw it last Thursday.
Excuse me, Mr. Coulter. Mr. Rowe is online.
Oh, he is.
He rose, he raised his hand.
Hey, Bill.
Mr. Rowe, how are you doing?
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Coulter. No, I'm happy to have you. I wasn't sure if you could hear me or not, but Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. So, Madam Chair, there were a few.
Wait just a minute, we can barely hear you. Something with the, oh, we can't hear him.
Can you get closer to your microphone, Bill? Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So we did have a few changes since the last time you voted, which was on the 14th. So we had a correction to, for the Fire Department, the Motor Equipment Repairman, there was a miscalculation in his salary, so that added $1,619. Madam Chair, may I interrupt?
Yes.
Bill, I have no problem with all of the different expenses. I can explain them in person. What Mr. Cavie was asking is the surplus of 2.136 at the very bottom. Yeah, so if these changes are voted by the Finance Committee, we would have a surplus of, excuse me, 2,136, $618 in the so-called tax levy portion of the revenues. We understand that the School Committee has voted to request an additional 2.5 million. So that would put us in the hole by $363,382. However, we've allowed for a $465,000 snow and ice deficit. It's currently just under 98,000. So if the Finance Committee is willing to cover that with a transfer, then everything would be good. So thank goodness we had a mild winter, so I think we can reduce that snow and ice deficit estimate, as long as we don't have another April 1st of 1997 storm where we lost power for three days.
Mr. Rowe, I had a little bit of a hard time hearing you, but just, I'm going to sort of just say it back to you, and you can tell me if I missed something. So as I understand it, the schools have reopened their budget. They're going to be adjusting their number by about 2.5 million, I think you said it was. When we adjust the municipal budget accordingly to, according to the schedule, about 2.136 million comes out of that, which, so that leaves us with a couple of hundred thousand dollars difference, which is going to be made up via the Finance Committee balance transfer. Is that sort of the high level, what you said?
Yes, yes. So after the, if all the, excuse me, if all of these proposed changes are approved by the Finance Committee, plus the 2.5 million for the School Department, we'd be in the deficits position of about $363,000. However, the snow and ice deficit estimate is 465,000. We're only at a, we're just under $98,000 deficit right now, so we should be okay if we can adjust that snow and ice deficit. And if something happens, the Finance Committee in the past has been willing to cover that snow and ice deficit with a transfer, either from the Reserve Fund or from some other department after May 1st.
Okay, the last question I have is, these, based on the things you've said, my understanding of, based on what I can hear, this, some of this or all of this has already been addressed with the Finance Committee? Are they aware of these changes?
They are aware of these changes, yes. This was sent out to them on the 23rd. Of course, the most significant thing is, things are the preliminary assessments that came in from the Mass Water Resource Authority for water and sewer. The water assessment was 16,488 lower than the estimate. However, the sewer was 417,000 higher, so that puts the potential subsidy from the general fund at $938,000. So that was the biggest impact of all of all those, I think it's five changes, five new
Perfect. I thank you very much for your time and thank you for helping me understand that. I have nothing for the questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair Cavie, for that question. Mr. Carrara?
To you, Madam Chairman, to see this money that's here and just to see it be put back into add backs without us going through all of it with Bill Rowe sitting here and at another meeting or a special meeting, to choose priorities, because I think the water and sewer should be taken and straightened out, the shot falls 100% for the residents. There are a few raises that have to go out because they were settled and through the Town Manager and contracts and people doing extra work that was explained to us, but there was two firefighters budgeted. Now, we're immediately, let's just do it, even if we don't know if we have enough money for that person next year. We're in a wicked tight spot, and I don't think, just because that money's here, to start chucking it back in without looking at it. We made cuts, the Town Manager made cuts, and things were in a budget that was handed to the Finance Committee. I know you remember, when we were on the board, we got sick and tired of being on the Finance Committee with reopen, 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 fish in, fish in. If things were going to be okay before this money surfaced, it should be put in a proper area, and I think we should look at it hard, not just passing on a consent agenda. I'm sorry, this is way too big for just a short vote here. And that's all I ask from Madam Chairman, is that we look to put this on another meeting agenda, just sliding this through, because I'd like to sit with the Town Manager and Bill and us to look at the proper way to put this money, even if we don't spend it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coulter? Oh, Mr. Coulter?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm disappointed that there be a suggestion that it's improper. The Board has voted 90% of these already. They've been reviewed, they've been moved, they've been seconded, and they've been voted unanimously. So there's three or four that have been added since your last vote. So these have been fully vetted. There's nothing improper here, and I'd be happy with Mr. Rowe's help to go through every one of these line items and discuss them in great detail. There's very little, if any, new spending that we have any control over here, like school assessments, regional schools, agricultural schools. We didn't have those numbers at the time of the vote. New growth assessments, we didn't have those at the time of the vote. We've now received hard numbers. So the Finance Committee prudently asked us not to change the original budget as that new information came in over the last two and a half months, to keep it on a separate list, and then we'll discuss each one of them at the end of the process. There is no new news in this submittal, and I'd be delighted to go through every one of them individually. There's a couple that Mr. Rowe will describe, having to do with debt, having to do with new growth. All the other ones are operational measures. By way of example, we were planning to go into Regional 911 on October 1st, excuse me, July 1st. That's been put off till October since we did the budget. So we have to pay those dispatches that were otherwise going to 911 for an additional three months. Could not have known that January 1st. So if you'd like, I'd be delighted to go through every item on this add back, and just for the record, a third of these are not add backs, they're give backs. They're give backs. Would you like us, Bill and I, to go through these? I'd be happy to do so, either now or offline or however you'd like to do it.
Before I answer that question, Mr. Coulter, Mr. Carrara has a question or a comment?
It's more like a comment.
A comment.
The night that this was on the agenda and the regional vote, or the explanation why we're going that way, because I still got an 82-page document that nobody's explained to me yet, because we were going to have a meeting when the police chief was going to come in, but that's all right. I wasn't present. That was the night that it snowed, and I was out. So I didn't have an explanation to what's that. That's why I said something. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. This is my finance and talking, from what I see here. I wasn't privy to the information, because I was out there, so I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I still think if there are any questions at all, in the interest of transparency, I think we should take the time and go through every single adjustment.
Okay.
And between Bill and I, I know we have all the information that will be required.
Okay. So would you like to do that now or on our next board meeting? How quickly do you need to have this? Because we did submit our budget to FinCom, and they did ask us to send the amendments, I call them amendments.
That's right.
The amendments on a separate sheet and because of version control, that's the way it was described to me, version control.
I completely understand that. That was the right way to do it. The FinCom is voting on the 29th. They will not vote on anything the Board has not already voted on. So there are several items that have been suggested since your last vote.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Mr. Rowe?
No, that was all I was going to say, Madam Chair.
Can you move a little closer, please?
Yeah. That's all I was going to say, Madam Chair. The FinCom plans on voting tomorrow evening.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think Mr. Cavie had his hand up. I'm not sure. Perhaps through you, to the Town Manager, the ones that were changed from the last time, could you point those out? And if people have an issue with them, they could deal with them so that we don't have to go through the entire list.
Through you, Madam Chair. Bill, are these, did you list these in order? Do you know which ones have not been voted on by the FinCom yet? Sure, sure. So, but the Select Board, the ones that say N in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th column in are the ones that have not yet been voted. So we have a, in the Fire Department, we had a miscalculation on the Motor Equipment Repairman. That's an increase to the budget of $1,619.
Could you stop just for a second? I'm not, the 5th column in.
Can you hear me? What is this, the heading?
It'll be down here. These, it starts here on the N, so it starts here. Yeah, that's where he's starting.
The Motor Equipment Repair?
Yeah, so it's about, it's the sixth from the bottom is the first one that has not been acted upon yet. It says Motor Equipment Repairman. So that's an increase to the budget of $1,619. Then the next two, we have a certified.
You said $1,000, right? $1,600?
$1,619, yes.
I'm not, I'm, the only reason I'm asking the question is, people have had a chance to look at this list, and all I'm trying to do is find out which items. You don't have to go through an explanation for me. If somebody wants to raise their hand, they can do that, but I think in fairness, it's important to know what things have changed. That's all, that's the reason I'm asking the question.
The Town Manager is going to explain the last four, right out of the gate. So the bill, a couple of things I want to do. I only want you to go through the ones you have added since I've seen this last. That's all I'm asking. But I want to make clear to the Board, with very few exceptions, these were 2024 expenditures. It's not spent until it's voted. These start in July, the only places that they strike that. These expenditures will not be made until July. So Bill, I'd like you, if you wouldn't mind, because you made these additions after the Board voted it, would you simply go through the ones that have been added since the Board of Select, the Select Board have voted last? Sure. So we have a Motor Equipment Repairman from the Fire Department. There was a miscalculation of the 24 salary, and we had to add $1,619 to the general fund budget. The next two, and by the way, that's, the last six items on this list are the ones that have not, have not yet been voted. There's a certified mechanic that's split between water and sewer. That was also a miscalculation on the budget document, and that is a decrease of $375 to each, to water and sewer. And then the big one is the, we finally got our preliminary assessments from the Mass Water Resource Authority. They said they sent an email, but a lot of people didn't get it. They had a problem with their email system. So for the Sewer Department, the assessment went up 417,949. For the Water Department, the assessment went down from our estimate, 1,006, I'm sorry, And so as a result of the changes to the assessment, and there was another change, previous change to the department head's salary, we had to increase the subsidy for the.
the sewer fund by $424,694. So those are the resulting changes. So we're, so it's a net increase of all these increases and decreases result in a net increase to the general fund of $151,192. That's all of the adjustments, both voted and unvoted.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Mr. Coulter.
Madam Chair, by way of example, as you know, the health care deficit, structural deficit, and money that had to be covered, what we were doing out of free cash, was estimated in what you voted on at about $2,070,000. It's been lowered to approximately $1.5 million, because since the time of the vote, we have been able to negotiate design, plan, design changes with the members that have dropped it almost $600,000, or decreased it by almost $600,000. So I don't want anybody to have the impression these are all add backs. As the last two months have gone by, there've been additions, there've been subtractions. What I think would be appropriate, and I know my friend Scott has got questions on those things that he voted, I forgot he wasn't present. I think it's wise, because if he's got questions, the public has questions, to ask questions on those items that the Board has already voted during the night of the storm, and would be happy to answer them for Scott. I could do it purely from memory, and Bill can deal with whatever I can't remember.
So this is mainly health insurance and contractual obligations?
That have already been voted?
That have already been voted.
Oh, it's the first 20-something on this list that have already been voted.
Yeah.
But I'd be happy to answer any questions, to refresh the memories of Board members, or in Scott's case, if he has a question on any of them, there's darn good answers for all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. Vice Chair Kavy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This isn't necessarily meant to persuade Mr. Carrara to change his views or anything, or anybody else to, but I just want to remind everybody that the budget that we submitted in January is the budget from the Select Board, and that's it, right? Anything beyond that, now the budget belongs to the Finance Committee, and anything that we vote to send to them are recommendations for changes to that budget, but it isn't a new budget. And ultimately, you know, we kind of are deferring to their judgment to add these back, with their faith in us that we are making reasonable requests and so forth. And as estimates become actual, it would be unreasonable for them to not agree with some of these, some of these changes. But on the one hand, on the other hand, this is really much, very much belongs to them. That's why I was asking Bill if they had already discussed this, because ultimately, to some degree, I just, I want to provide the Finance Committee with the information they need and validation that, you know, we're verifying this stuff. But at the end of the day, this does fall on them to scrutinize at this point, and they're very good at it, and they're very thorough. So I feel, I feel personally, just speaking for myself, I feel like I have enough information to vote and put it into the hands of the people who will ultimately decide on this.
Mr. Kavy, through you, Madam Chair, maybe I'm misunderstanding, which is quite possible, I'm still a newbie. We're following the process the Finance Committee has given us to follow. When the budget was voted, the Finance Committee, in their wisdom, and they were 100% correct, said, "Do not change this budget document, because there'll be documents all over the place. Keep a list of additions and subtractions," I guess that's customary in the town of Stoughton. And at the end, once the Selectmen vote these changes, then the Finance Committee, after they do their due diligence, will vote up or down. The only place, Steve, we disagree, is the Charter calls for a presentation of the Selectmen's budget and a presentation of the Finance Committee's budget. If on the floor of town meeting, they're not the same budget, then my understanding, as we did in the legislature, is we debate the differences. It's not just one budget, it's two budgets presented in the town meeting book. And I'm happy, as I've said now for the third time, to go through every single one of these. They're not asks, they're additional expenses that have come up since you voted your budget. They're not asks. We're not looking to buy new cars or plant new trees. They're not wants. When your vocational assessment goes up for a school, and we didn't have that information, that has to find its way into this accessory budget, as Steve said, they're necessary. When we are not replacing two custodians who are retiring because we can't afford the health care, then we added the money needed to pay a contractor to do that same work. Same money, but there's two deductions, and there's one increase. So I think that shining light on exactly what the detail is, whether it's to the public or to whoever wants it, would be helpful. There's no new asks in here. None. We had a department head who left. So we get to take that salary out, but we have to replace it with the acting department head. So the world doesn't stop when we submit a budget, because it's six months between the budget period and the new fiscal year. Things change. And so we're following the exact process that the FinCom asked us to follow. And all we're asking this evening in the consent budget is for the Board to consider and to vote on the final six that have been added. The others have already been voted by the Board. If I sound aggravated, it's four hours away from vacation, and I'm feeling the stress.
Hello, Lance.
Pardon me?
I'm right, no, no.
Madam Chair.
You're fine, you're fine. And I appreciate your insights and your thoughts on these things, but no, there's no problem here. I just wanted to try to find a path forward so we won't have to, we can get the Finance Committee the information they need, and we're able to kind of move on from this item.
Have they indicated in any way they do not have the information they need for this?
Via Bill Rowe, it sounds like they've already discussed a lot of these items, so I...
They discussed, they refused to vote anything until the Board votes. So we've given this to them because the Board voted. The last six the Board has not voted on, so all we're asking for is a Board, a vote of the Board on the new six.
Yeah.
Bottom six, the fill this in. That's all we're asking for.
Yeah.
And the Finance Committee will have all the, if they don't already, will have all the backup information in order for them to take that vote tomorrow evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter. And Vice Chair Kavy, Mr. Gito.
I don't want to slow up your getting out of here, Mr. Town Manager, but it's, perhaps, this is a very good process. I would suggest that when we do it next year, and you have to keep the entire list, that the new items that come on should perhaps be in bold or something else, so that we know what we're dealing with. And that would cut down on the confusion. And from my perspective, all of the things that you've, that you want to transmit, all the information that you want to transmit to the Finance Committee are things that you've learned since you would submit the initial budget, and they all make sense. And they make sense, they should make sense to the Finance Committee as well. I move to approve this, these additions.
Madam Chair, one comment before you take your vote.
And also, before we move forward, I wanted to make sure that Mr. Carrara was all set with the new, the new six, because he's typically here. I mean, the one time that, or the rare occasion that he was absent.
If I could control the weather, I wouldn't be sitting here.
(laughing).
Nope. The majority of the Board voted this the first time around. The new one's on the bottom. I'm going to leave it alone, and we'll just move on.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Coulter.
Just a final comment, Madam Chair. Of the six new ones, two of them are water and sewer. We received those assessments for 2024 last Friday. Last Friday.
New information. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Kavy, did you have something else?
Nothing else, we have a motion. I will second it, because I'm in favor of it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I abstain.
And I vote aye.
A motion to...
We still have to do the minutes, right?
We have to do the meeting minutes of February 21st, 2023, with the one amendment.
Motion approved with the amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Unanimous decision. Moving right along to item number six, and that is the variance request that the owners step forward and state your name and your rest. Go to the next item. Hello, and how are you?
Well, how about yourself?
Doing pretty good. Settle in.
May I ask a question before we get started here?
Yes, Mr.
Have we had a hearing on this?
Have we had a public hearing?
Yes.
On the request?
Yes.
I don't believe we've had a public hearing on the request.
Well, we need to have a public hearing.
Yes.
In a vote, Madam Chair?
Yes.
They're not applying this evening for an alcohol license.
They're just trying to give us an update on...
No, they're applying for a variance to our bylaw that you modified or edited a month ago. They can't apply for an alcohol license until they're issued a variance from the bylaw that prevents them from applying for a variance. Is that clear?
Yes, it is.
How you doing today, tonight's Select Board? I'm Giovanni, and this is my wife Diana.
May I, may I just stop this for a second? The page in our policy says that we have to have a public hearing on the request for a variance. I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm not, for or against, don't, do you want to read it? Somebody?
I take your word, that's fine.
Here, someone else should read it if...
Okay. So while we have...
Look, I'm not, I'm...
We're good, Mr. Gito.
I'm not, I'm not trying to do anything to these people. They've been here a dozen times, but...
Yeah, that's the whole point.
No, I understand. But we also have a process, and I don't know how we deal with that. We can decide we're not going to deal with it, I suppose.
No, I didn't get, Town Council, Town Council did not say it required a public hearing for a variance. As Mr. Gito's pointed out, these poor applicants have been before us, I don't know how many times, if they need, if the policy says it has to be a public hearing to ask for a variance from a policy that wasn't intended to cover them anyway in the first place, then a public hearing it requires. We'll have to reschedule. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Gito.
I'm sorry, I...
I understand.
Really, I am, but...
I'm sorry. If it requires a public hearing, it needs to be posted as a public hearing. We'll do that tomorrow morning.
So what's the process?
You just come into the office, through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just come into the Clerk's office tomorrow morning, and, oh, come into the Selectmen's office, we will post a public hearing for next Tuesday. If there's a meeting, I think there is.
Next Tuesday is the vote, right?
Yes.
Then it would be a week from Tuesday.
Wednesday.
There'll be a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Item number seven, candidate for appointment to open position of the Board of Assessors. Mark Hauserman?
He's right here.
Oh, please, please step forward.
Hi.
Met you on a couple occasions, it's nice to see you again. And you applied for vacancy on the Assessors Board.
That's correct.
Well, thank you very much for doing that, and your offer to serve on the Board. Do we have any questions to Mr. Hauserman? No?
Not really. He's pretty solid.
Yes, I agree.
Any questions? Or comments?
Just, since you're here, I'll ask a question.
Okay.
Well, it's not much of a question, actually. I'd like to make a statement, just express my appreciation for all that you've done for the town, and continue to do for the town. I know you've just recently were appointed as, I think, a member of the Sony Board of Appeals as an alternate, and I do love the work that they do. I felt like, as an alternate, I think you have so much, such a breadth of knowledge, and so much for us to, that we could benefit from, that I was, I was hoping for something more meaty for you, and this really honestly could not be a better arrangement. It's so critical, the work's so critical, and I think it's going to use your talents in a way that's really going to benefit the town. And it's something that these, I know the Assessors have desperately needed, you know, additional member, and it just seems to me, you know, such a wonderful arrangement, and I just want to express my appreciation that you've taken this on for the benefit of your community. It's a lot of work, and, you know, it's all behind the scenes, it's the most, some of the most thankless work, but I, I'm very thankful for it, and thank you very much for putting your name forward.
I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes.
Motion, oh, Mr. Gito.
Mark, thank you for all you do for the town. You've done it for a long time, and there's so many other things that you do that you don't have to come before, before this Board for. You keep North Stoughton pretty, and many other things. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Just add my name to the list of accolades, but I'll stop by thanking you for what you've done for our country, and your military service, which you should write a book on, just from the tidbits I've heard. But no, thank you, Mark, as well. We've had many conversations about finance, and it's one of the few times I sit and shut up and listen. So I like your vision, and glad to have you aboard. Thank you so much for stepping up for us.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I see your fellow Assessor Board members and the department director is there in support, and they're nodding in affirmative, so we're very happy, and thank you so much. I'm open to accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oh.
Madam Chair, I want to add to the accolades, in addition to Mr. Hauserman's military service and community service, he should also get the Welcome Wagon Award. My second night on the job, in between the end of the day and the Selectmen's meeting, I went down to Town Spa to get a pizza and a Coke, and I had the good fortune of sitting next to Mr. and Mrs. Hauserman for about an hour and a half, and I learned everything about the town I know about all of you. Mark, it's great to see you again.
Thanks, thank you.
Most of the tables, been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Thanks again.
Thank you so very much.
I hope when you were talking that you lied about me.
(laughing). Very flattering.
Next item on our agenda is item number eight, Town Manager's Goals and Objectives. And this is just a template, Mr. Coulter. It's a template that we use, as you can see, it has fiscal year 2021, and I believe my fellow Board members will agree with me, what we would like is to work with you to develop goals in partnership of, so this would be the way it looks, but the words on the document are not what needs to be changed, that needs to be updated. So I just wanted to share this with you publicly, and Vice Chair Kavy, did you have anything else to say about the template?
Yeah, yeah, so this was a template that we used for a prior Town Manager's review. We, this was, this came, a lot of this was borrowed from, I believe, Amherst, and the work that they did, and a current Chair, along with a previous Chair, and another previous Chair, all worked together to sort of hone this down into what you're currently seeing. This was a couple of years old. The format, you know, should be pretty self-explanatory, but there's just for, for anybody that it might be helpful to hear, all of the various elements of the job are broken up into... of, of the job are broken up into, you know, broken out and also within each of those there's like an annual expectation and then there's a, a, what I would call a goal specific to that year. I think you might even say that like, you know, something along the lines of FY21 goal. So just to give people who don't necessarily have the document in front of them a, a high level idea of what it means, what I'm talking about, we'll have an area of responsibility like fiscal management and we'll have annual expectations like, you know, provide a budget to the finance committee or plan, organize, administer to adopt budget within approved revenues and expenditures. Every year we would expect that and then for fiscal year 21, we have the additional goal of implementing munis, for example. Now, my understanding is that that's, that's done or done to the point where it's, it's not necessarily something we wanted as a goal. The areas of responsibility fall into a couple of buckets. We have community and intergovernmental, oh, this might kind of cut off here, so I'll start from the top. Fiscal management, relationship with board, with the board, town meeting and the community, long range planning, government operations, community and intergovernmental relations, and that's where it ends. So it's, I think, five or six areas and each, within each one of those, we had a couple of, sometimes just one or maybe a couple of goals. I, I like the way this is organized, I think it was successful when we, when we implemented it. I, I don't think, I wouldn't want to invest too much time in sharing, changing those areas of responsibility, but I think pinpointing goals within those areas, that, things we'd like to see in the next year between, I think it's April's when we would sort of start the clock on this, April 15th, to the following April 15th, to give you some things to, to work on now. I think one of them included a five-year plan or four, you know, three to five-year plan and so unfortunately you, because you have already done it, I don't know if you get credit, but I...
Yes, he will get credit for that.
So we'll just have to keep, keep good records, make sure we don't forget things you've already achieved before that was, it was even part of your goals, but I think that we're going to see that happen quite a bit, there's a lot of these that I think you're already well on your way to, to achieving from prior years and ones I would imagine would be adopted in the current year. So I think that's, that's the request from the rest of the board is to take a look at these, see if there's goals that, that, if there's goals that haven't been achieved yet. I think one of them, as an example, includes job descriptions, something I know that's been on your plate, everyone's probably heard it a thousand times, but it's been on, on lists of goals since 2021. For anybody wondering why that, why it wasn't completed in 2021, just for recall that we were in the middle of a pandemic, so there's some, certain goals that, that weren't achieved and for which it was sensible to not necessarily prioritize after we had already submitted the goals. But regardless, if we look through these, see if there's ones that you want to keep, if there's things you'd like to replace, have it, you know, come up with an idea, I think something you might want to have it replaced with, within these areas of responsibility. So that's, that's my ask, I, I won't speak for the chair, but I, I think that's more or less what will get us, once we vote on these in April, that will give us a year to, to, for you to implement them, prioritize them, synthesize them into your work.
Any other board member have a comment? It is what it is. All right, so this will be back on the agenda in a couple of weeks and I know you are, you have your chart of goals and we've talked about goals and it's a wonderful thing, this is a good working document, a template. Thank you.
Sorry.
Vice Chair Kaby?
Yeah, one other thing, I, which I forgot to really mention in this, is that when we did this in the past with Dr. Grimm, one of the things I thought was, was very successful about it was that we didn't just come up with goals for her, she had goals that she wanted to implement it and, you know, I hesitate to say we negotiated because it wasn't really a negotiation, but we kind of picked of the, of the full list of the things people on the board came up with and, and Robin came up with, we picked the ones that made the most sense and some of them were hers and some of them were ours, but we all came to an agreement that, that the ones we put in there, everybody understood as, as being priorities. And so, you know, I very much want to hear your thoughts on this as well, if, and want to understand, you know, in the time that we've worked together, I think you're very insightful and you, you can see through things pretty quickly. You might very well recognize things that should be prioritized that we don't even see, so I wouldn't be surprised. And so I'd appreciate any input you have on what gets in there and just for the sake of, of making sure that this, this is a good experience for everybody, I would not support a goal that you didn't support. So if there's something that you wanted to, if there's something that you didn't think was really a priority, you can count on me to not, to, to back you up on that. I think we need to all find consensus on this.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, I'll say it again, we want your buy-in and we're going to get your buy-in anyway.
The only thing...
Because I'm tired tonight, I'm not always this sensitive.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Mr. Gito.
Just to pick up on what you said.
Yes.
I think it's very encouraging to go into the Town Manager's office and see those two boards, the short-term and the long-term goals. That's something that is kind of exciting to think about.
It is exciting, isn't it? We love this stuff.
So, thank you.
Okay, moving right along to our next agenda item, number nine, discussion on best use option of the vacant Armory building. Where we left off, where we left off, Mr., we had designated two board, select board members as liaisons for the Armory. Our Town Manager, Mr. Coulter, asked us to delay our decision and allow him at least 30 days before making a decision and we granted you that 30 days. Well, here we are. So can you please give us an update on the Armory and all your good deeds and research?
Thank you, Madam Chair, happy to do so and I'm, I'm happy this is on the agenda. We've got both a public and a private strategy for the Armory. On the one hand, and I've said this in the past, we're, we've requested of Holbrook 911 that they consider the Armory as their second location for a regional 911 center. We are competing with six or seven other towns, but our location is a prime location. So they reminded us that we've got to put the heart before the cart, the other six members are already members of 911, we're not. We're in the process of, of analyzing it and, and considering the, the technical and the financial implications of joining. So it's not a short-term solution for the public use, so at the same time, we've asked Town Council to look at the process we need and it may be to go into a, a non-open session of the legislature to remove the title restriction, which permits only public sector activities in that building. So it may require special legislation, which would move through in a matter of a few weeks to, to a few months at the most, but we're working it on both fronts. I very much would like to see Regional 911 put a new regional center there. If that can't happen or if we're not selected, then at least we'll get the title cleared so we can make a decision on whether we're going to sell the property or not sell the property. I don't, and perhaps the board does, but I don't have any future plans on my list of things to do for the town, so my recommendation, once we know if 911 will go there, would be that to either use it for that public use, Regional 911, or either demo it and sell the land, which is very valuable, or sell it as-is as a building. But before that, we need to clear the title of a deed restriction that permits only public sector activities. So it, there's not going to be a 30-day answer, unfortunately, but that's what we're working towards so that we have options.
Thank you very much for that update. I would like to hear from our liaisons that were board-appointed and that would be Mr. Carrara and Vice Chair Kaby, because I know the last discussion, I'm sure it was before you, it was Police Station. But let me give them the microphone and they can debrief us so there's not a conflict and duplicative...
Yeah, so...
...efforts.
What's up, Ben?
Madam Chairman, I asked Mr. Coulter if I could be part of the, the, being where I was, Mr. McCrisky put me up as the lead, I would have expected to have been involved in some of this, but I'm going to tell you right now, as I said before, this Armory is for the Police Station. It's the last decent piece of property that we own, that we don't have to go searching for. We own it. If it's not going to be a fire station because they didn't want to use it, we'll give it to Chief McNamara so that she can set up something with the size of that property and the amount of availability to do what she wants there and set it up the way she wants it. We could, like I said before, put a mezzanine over to keep her cars out of the weather, it would be so advantageous to her and her people. It doesn't have to be in a centralized choked-up downtown because her cars are everywhere. She has a, that's a home base, it's visible and I'm sorry, I'm not going to wait, wait for Holbrook 911 to see who's filling their part the heaviest. We went through, I talked to people, I know what's going on, I'm not broker in a piece of property that we have to make a deal at the State House to change the deed and then when it's not right, we're going to tear it down and put it out to, for sale. If that was the way to go, then we should immediately put 400 Prospect Street, because it's already been demoed, right out to sale and do what's right for the firemen now and put them on a main street too. So I'm not looking to broker this. They were offered this, 30 days has gone by, I'm not waiting three months, six months or till the pile gets sweet. They'll take us to wherever regional site they want because it's a benefit to them. It's a benefit to maybe the town, it wasn't explained to us. Again, I'm waiting for the 82-page document to be explained to us why it's either going to stay here or it doesn't. I know Tom understands what he, what he's doing, but I also understand what I want for the policemen. Once they get that Armory up and running and we can get that, they won't have to worry about that place for 300 years or until the cars aren't cars anymore and they're rocket ships and they need another site. God only knows. But that site was taken for either a fire station or another municipal safety thing and I don't, I don't feel bad for Holbrook 911 one bit, because they'll find a site, they'll want people to be in their umbrella and then that's the way it is. So we're either going to do what's right for this town for once or we're going to do it wrong again.
Sure.
We, we have a conflict, so Vice Chair Kaby and Mr. Coulter, but did you want to go next, Vice Chair Kaby?
If, if it's okay with you, Mr. Coulter, I, I'll be very quick though, I just, I, I, you know, I do respect Mr. Carrara and his opinion, I have a slightly different view, which is, is that we have a lot of possible uses. I want, I want to nail down sooner rather than later what we're doing with, with this property. Within the next year, I want to have some confirmation. But, you know, there's, there's, we have a lot of, we have a lot of uses and I think that, that I would like to not be so sure about what has to absolutely happen right now, I think we still have a lot to deliberate on, think about, the work that, that Mr. Coulter does, I, you know, he, he tends to be very successful with he, what he puts his mind to, but there's a lot of forces that might prevent this from even getting very far. Holbrook might just choose another location or, or the Senate might, you know, they might take, take a really long time to decide, whatever it might be. I think that we, that it's healthy for us to keep some options open and keep our minds open about what some, some of the potential uses are. I think having it as a regional 911 could be a huge benefit for the town, I, I'm open to being persuaded that's, that's the best use. Regardless of, of that though, within my own work, I'm, I do want to prioritize what happens with the Police Station, determine what we're going to do with that. I don't believe that the building they're in right now is adequate and I think we have to address that. The, the Armory provides us with a great opportunity if, if, if we ultimately decide that's the way to go and that's the best use, I would, I would support it. But I just feel like there's, there's so much information that we still have to get that I, that I would be very hesitant to decide now exactly what the best use of that building is. And I think that we have two, two potential streams, I guess three perhaps, one is Regional 911, second is, is a Police Station, which, to be honest, one of the other reasons I like that is, is it does give us the opportunity to use that space on Rose Street for some other use, including redevelopment into something like senior housing. So that's so central to downtown that if it doesn't end up at the Armory, it still might be nice to find someplace that's less central for the Police Station so that we can use that property for another, another purpose and, but those are the two, right? Regional 911, Police, Police Station, and the third is, is we have no good real use and it's, and it's time to get rid of it, which I'm perfect, I very much, you know, recognize might very well be the case, that we've been sitting on it for, for a very long time and it, the, the earth is slowly absorbing it back in to the ground, right? It's, it's, it's a, it's a very strong building, very, very well-built, but it's not going to be here in a thousand years and, and some of it, one might argue are, you know, are essentially gone for our uses. So if we've sat on it so long that it, that it's turned into garbage, maybe it is time to, for us to sell it as well. So that's my view, I, I think that, that I still want to give, leave my options open and see what, what possibilities come, become clear. I said I was going to be quick and I apologize, Mr. Coulter, I was not quick, but I, but I do, the ideas that you have, I think are true to your form, they're very creative and I think they, they bring, they're very collaborative, they bring, they solve a lot of problems with one, you're sort of, you know, you're, you always tend to kill three or four boards with one stone in a way that I think I'd really like to give you the benefit of the doubt. The Police Station though is something that's on my radar and something that I would like to see as at least an option on there, but thank you very much.
Well said, Mr. Kaby.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kaby, Mr. Coulter.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Listen, I, I serve at the pleasure of this board and I have no interest in working on anything that this board is not interested in. I thought I was asked to think about and plan for other options. I've been here almost four months, 13 to 15 hours a day, six days a week, this is the first I've ever heard about a Police Station. And I'm around here a lot, so forgive me for looking at options that I thought there were none. And at the end of the day, there's nothing about a Police Station in our four-year capital budget, which we voted on. So not for nothing, and again, I'll probably feel horrible going home tonight because I seem to be at odds with members of the board, that's not a good career path, but I will like, I will be...
First of all, that's not the case.
I will happily drop any more time, energy or anything in that old, broken-down, discarded embarrassment on Route 139. And if we're going to build a Police Station, tell me where you want me to direct my time and energy and I'll focus on a Police Station. I didn't know that was in the cards, I thought we were still talking about a fire station. So forgive me for not being informed, I, I won't spend another minute, so I, I, I'll pass on that project to the, my gentlemen colleagues who have got more information on it than I do.
Before, oh, yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just very briefly, and Tom, I say keep your options open on everything for the town of Stoughton. One thing that when we did talk a while back about the Police Station is an option that utilizes the land to the right of the Police Station, where that's town-owned land, and that could be built with a, a pretty good-sized addition that will meet the needs of the Police Department at a far less cost than going up and building a whole new building. You know, we have to start to work smarter, not harder, with, with the funds we have and we did make a very huge step when we changed the scope from a public safety building to a fire station that made it more affordable for the Fire Station, as well as did not cut off building for the future of our Police Station, which could include that site, which could include the site that we own down on 138 as well. But again, we won't know unless we look at everything, I believe, we, you know, we shouldn't be just saying this is the plan. And, you know, again, it just should be known that in addition to the Armory site, which could be a very good site for it, I don't disagree, but we look at everything and I would want you to look at everything, including a build-out of what we potentially could be done right there on Rose Street. To Scott's point, that the police cruisers are on the road, you know, and it is centrally located for the residents that go into the Police Station, do business...
located for the residents that go into the police station, do business as well, but if it's easier, more affordable, and if it's something we do in concert with the 911 system, which everybody knows, it's, it's not a secret that more of these 911 systems are going regional. There's a lot of federal funding and state funding that's been put at it, and we'd be crazy to not take apart of some of that money and give the taxpayers a break instead of paying for everything out of our pockets. The more resources we can bring into the town that limits the impact on the taxpayers, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to vet everything, everything that's out there, including an addition on land that we already own. So, that was my two cents, you know, and your career path is safe. When I hear Mr. Gito applauding you, I get happy. Because we disagree on several things, but it's nice to hear that we are on the same page on this one. So, that's a good thing.
Mr. Gito?
I'm not a developer.
All right.
I don't know the cost of things. I would like to, to sit down with people that do know that and get some ideas as to what the cost of doing business is. I'd like to look at, at some of the older reports that, that were for the fire and police station, separate out the, the police from the fire and that, and maybe that's already been done. And, and look at some of the other things that we need to do as well. I'm not really interested in sitting around here this evening and making a decision on that, but I think we ought to work on a plan to get all the information that we need and sit down and then do an analysis of that and figure out what makes sense because we have a lot of things to do. That, that capital plan is a long list of stuff, and they're not trivial things. And we've got to work, as other people have said, smarter, and we have to be open in terms of how we're thinking about things and involve other people in it. We cannot do another fire station, "Oh, I've got the great idea, and we're going to do this." If we don't involve the other people in town and get ideas from them, those are the people that have to vote to pay for these things. And we have to keep that right in the front of our mind, not as sort of a trivial thing. Just because we're sitting here doesn't mean we're the smartest people in town.
So, thank you very much. Before we go on, I just would like you to know, Mr. Coulter, I like the idea that we are focused on the police. I like the idea we're keeping options open. I really like working with you, and I know you're getting ready for vacation, but don't worry about that. Okay, good. I would like to say that it was one thing that Mr. Carrara said, and we might have overlooked it. He said that even though the board, the select board appointed Mr. Carrara and Mr. Vice Chair Cavey on the armory, Mr. Carrara said that he wanted to be included in your research and, and assessment, and when we bring it back to the board, at least we have an idea, we have a working, actionable plan that those select board members that we appointed for the armory are part of. So, we want you to be included in the decision. Of course, we want you. You're a town manager, but we don't ever want you to feel that something was done that you weren't included in, and our select board members, something is done and they weren't included in, because, you know, that's just the way things are. Mr. Carrara?
Just, just to touch on things, I, I don't go home after I leave here and not talk to people or other contractors or people that I know. Tom said we could adjust the capital plan. Things could be ended. That was what Mark Tisdale said. Things can be amended. So, that thing isn't gospel. We don't have to stick by 1 through 10. We could slide 5B in there, all right? So, let's use paper trail with paper trail, all right? The armory was used as a police station when they were building this so-called 25 to 50 year, no worry. This town is jumping in leaps and bounds. The congestion that's going to take place in this downtown because of the T telling us what we have to put there for residency is going to choke that police station off. I don't know if you've been in the square like I have with a trailer hooked to a truck and see the cruiser go on the opposite side of the road, weave his way back in trying to get out because he happened to be there to respond. It's not a good place anymore. Steve and I talked when we were at the housing thing, that the best thing to do, if we could pull it off, is to get that police station back down there and then let the SRA have that to put in four floors like they wanted to, with maybe a parking garage added to it, and that appeases what MBTA says we have to do. But if this thing falls through with the Holbrook 911, I am certainly not going to sell a piece of town land to build either apartments down there, let's swing it over so we can put condos down there. It's not going to, the neighborhood's not going to stand for it, and I don't think they should. That building is an excellent building. It's one of the buildings in the town that's earthquake-proof and on the fallout shelter. Just to put information out there to you that I have researched, but here's the best one. Did we or did we not rip that library to its skeletal core? Memorial was just a bunch of irons standing there. People got to sign it. That armory's in better shape than when they ripped it to its stellar, the skeletal core at the library. There's a gentleman sitting in this room that, back in '08, when we got it, we had a fire station all priced out for $3.4 million to go in that building, five at the highest to give them a high-end fire station, not what the building committee was trying to pull off, a Taj Mahal out of control, let's have a cafeteria in there so people can sit with the firemen. It was ridiculous. So, this is why I'm passionate about this armory, because I know what's going to happen. We're going to be chasing the dog's tail again, looking for a piece of property. Maybe we'll go to the school department again and beg for a piece. Let's do what's right. I'm not saying that I don't involve other people, but when I was asked to get involved on a fire station that's turning into a debacle, I wasn't allowed, and somebody else wasn't allowed on the board, and I'm staring at him. When you're told you can't be part of something, how do you think I feel when I asked and I was told and I wasn't? End of the story. There's nothing against him. I appointed him with the rest of us. I have the utmost respect and promise for him. There's nothing wrong with Tom Coulter. No matter what people think they say or what they say about us, I can take it. I've done nine years before. This is my new thing. I want to do what's best for the residents. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
I promise, I won't-
Oh, sorry. Mr. McCrisky, and then Mr. Coulter, and then we're going to move on to our next agenda item, so we can stay on-
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to remind people, when we talk about a citizens committee, we had a citizens committee, and they basically wasted $300,000 of the taxpayers' money. The citizens committee took on two members that were not appointed and held them around when the chairman then made a comment that he was going to recognize them because they've contributed. So, this is what happens when some citizens committees get a little too powerful and they forget their, their main function. And let's remember as well, when we were talking about a public safety building, we're still at the, only the, the 55 to 60 million dollar point on this, okay? So, you know, again, we all say we want to work smarter, harder, and cheap, and we're going to give everything back to the taxpayers. You know, we changed that process just for that reason, and we still come in at a much less a piece of property, and if we were to build onto the police station, whatever way we want to decide to do it, you know, we would still be under that budget that they were looking at of 60 million dollars. So, I mean, let's, let's just lay the facts out there. The facts don't lie, okay? And we have already done the research on the needs. Palmeroy Associates just happens to be the people working with us on our fire station has all that data now. So, through you, Madam Chair, I'd ask when the town manager returns from vacation, that we just ask Palmeroy if they could put a package together for us on all the data that was submitted for the use, needs of the fire station and the police station, and that we consider going back to town meeting for a feasibility for, you know, the improvement of the police station, wherever it would be and whichever location or whatever. I mean, it's, we don't, we do know that we need this. You know, we've talked about this before. Two other citizens committees for the police station and the fire station on Central Street failed, not because there was any back-room politics and money stuffed in pockets and private deals. They were incapable, they weren't qualified for the job. Therefore, the mistakes were made. So, we've done that in the last projects. We've had consultants working for us. We had consultants working in this building, doing, you know, doing things right after the water. So, we have the right people working for us. Palmeroy Associates has built more police and fire stations than any firm around. So, we have all that data. All we have to do is sweep it up, you know, bring it back together, look at the, you know, look at the figures that were used on all that, and then see what our, our capabilities are and what we need to do. And if it means going to the armory, if that's the best site, then we should do it. No better place to have a, a police station and a 911 dispatch, because then we have revenue from 911 dispatch coming to the residents of Stoughton. So, if we're going to build, let's build and get the best return on our investment instead of just putting money out. Let's try to bring some money in at the same time. We have to think outside the box. So, that's it, and I would hope that we can get those, those original figures and everything, the study that they did on the public safety building, because I know the police department was very involved with that, on her needs, square footage and so forth, match it up with what we have here, and, you know, just at least get the conversation going. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. We're going to, this is the last comment, so we can stay on, on target, move to the next agenda item.
Madam Chair, I just want to make very clear that I'm good. I'm completely good. I love this guy.
You're right.
All, all I was, and the chance of 911 being in that building is probably, a month ago it was less than 2%. Today, it's less than 25%. So, if we've got plans for that building, I'm on board. Point me in the right direction, I'm on board. All I'm saying is that, I love that Scott said I don't have a problem with him. That's like Richard Nixon saying, "I'm not a crook." You know, all of a sudden, he's got a problem, right? I meet with the chief, if not once, twice, three times a day, not once has she ever talked about a police station. Not once. So, if I missed a bone on that, I apologize, but not once have I ever been heard about. I know it's not in Bill Rose's long-term financial plan. I know it's not in our four-year capital plan, so that, that's fine. I can work on that the Monday I return and drop, you know, the 911 and certainly not go through the effort and the expense of trying to get the deed, the title changed if we have plans for that property. It's a prime piece of property. But I was going to report on three pieces of property tonight that we have a plan for. I don't have a plan for the other two. I'm not saying a word.
Well, thank you very much for saying that, Mr. Coulter. So, we did appoint Mr. Carrara and Vice Chair Cavey.
I know that now.
Right, I'm just saying this for the record, and so, we're, we all understand, and they will work with you, and I'm sure they'll, we'll, we'll gain some updates, we'll have some updates periodically, what's going on, because that's another piece of property that's underutilized. So, we would-
If I, just ask if you forward to the town manager that we did, when we changed the scope, we were talking about a police station, and we said that we would address that in the future, so he should, he should know that, where he said he would know.
Can you say that aloud, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the town manager. I just think, and what Scott said, when we talked about the fire station, original, the public safety building, and we redirected the attention to a fire station, it was said that we would not lose sight of the fire, of the police station. And the police chief was very pointed to me in, in no unsubtle terms, how she felt about changing the scope. So, it, I just think it would be unfair to say that we haven't talked about it. We have, it's always been an issue. I just want to let you know, if you haven't heard it, when the scope was changed, we did say we would not lose sight. There is an immediate need for the police station as well, but we had to get to the low hanging fruit, you know, so, thank you.
I just want to echo that because I was about to send you a text on that very point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to the next agenda item, which I thought this would be more time-consuming. Number 10. Train Station Depot building discussion on best-use options to be presented on state budget earmark. So, what we have, we have CPC, we had an ask to them for $200,000 to help with the train station. What we also have is conversations with the legislative body, because we need funding to repair, build out our train station. With that, we need to identify best use, or the funding sources are likely to go nowhere. So, I would like to hear Mr. Coulter's ideas on where we are, what do you really need to move forward, because it's a, it's a large ask out there to the legislative body.
Yes, it is. Madam Chair, just a little background. In the state budget, every year, every legislator is asked to give a, a list of what their community needs are. Having served in that body for 12 years, I know how it works. You give five or six asks, and they typically go to the most inexpensive one and give you a little kiss, if you will. I've gone to our legislative delegation, and I've, I've told them, and Senator Timolty has taken the lead in the Senate, and, and we've said to them that we need a $3.5 million investment to rebuild, of state money, to rebuild, refurbish that place to its A-plus form. And we've made an argument that, given its proximity, proximity to the center, it will unleash the type of economic drivers that we're looking for. Developers are saying, and they've said it to Mark and I, "If you folks aren't investing your own buildings, why should we invest in the center of your town?" And they look primarily at the theater and at the, the train station. And so, I'll be working with Senator Timolty and the two representatives who so wonderfully represent our community, to lobby the Chair of Ways and Means, the Speaker of the House, and the Senate President, to give us an unprecedented grant or earmark. It's an outside section of the budget, to be able to unleash the, the potential of downtown. In order to do that, in order to sell our vision, we have to have a specific purpose for that building. And so, I'd ask the, the board to discuss and to give me a clear direction to sell to Speaker Mariano and, and Senate President Spilka, to work with our delegation. We can't just say, "We're looking for $3.5 million to fix it." They want to know what the purpose is, and, and they want to know that it's tied to some sort of other economic drivers. I know the words they're looking for. And we're asking, we're shooting for the stars, but to get that building into its original form would be a huge economic driver for the community. So, we just need the board to give us that clear direction. I, I know the CPC is asking for the same thing, as they consider their contribution into that building. And so, I would, I would encourage the board to have an open discussion that concludes with a clear direction. There's nothing binding about it, but we need to know what to say to the legislature.
Yes, I, I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Coulter. Senator Tim, Senator Timolty has been very good to the town of Stoughton.
Surely has.
And he has outreach to me, and, but he needs to know, and he needs to know what to put, what our ask- And he needs to know what to put, what our ask is, so he can support our ask as best as he can. And I did support what Mr. Coulter is saying, and the dollar amount, and the location as well. I also want to tie that into our most recent discussion, and that was with CPC, SRA, the Planning Board. That's when we asked for the $200,000 at that, Pam McCarthy was here as well. And at the time, Pam McCarthy said, well, she had written and got approval for a grant, but the, for a consultant to do a survey to identify the best use for the train station. And then a couple of others who are in this audience right now said, well, they came up with some ideas, and I think those ideas should be considered today, so we can make a decision and move on. Vice Chair Cavey.
Don't want to interrupt you, but I think I might have been the only one on the Board when we got the train station, though. Could be wrong. I think, maybe, maybe, Mr. McCrisky, you were as well?
No, I did it on the tail end of...
Right at the end, okay. So I was like, right near the end, yeah, I remember Mike Sullivan was heavily involved, and I think you went up taking, you ran his seat, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I was ready to switch around. And, so even though, so we just got the train station. I know you were there, though, when we started discussing a use, if not the first time, maybe the second time we were talking through it. And I'm sure it's been on your mind for years, even before that. When we were first discussing it, you know, and I said this each time we've come back around, there's really only two things I really wanted to see. One is the building being secured, right? Owned by the town, or paid attention by somebody, doesn't really matter who. But the T wasn't. They were just letting it rot. So secured, and the other one was activated. And I wanted to see it as used for some purpose. And at the time, I didn't have a strong feeling about what that might be. My first feelings were that the private sector might be able to move quickly and activate that building for the public. My hopes of that being true have diminished over time. I really haven't seen a private use that really aligns with our values in a way that makes a lot of sense. I mean, I've heard some, you know, like a martini bar, there's, there's just things like that. I don't know. For me, it just seems like that's not really the best use of that facility. So after now, you know, three years or more, four years of talking about this, I've come pretty, you know, I've done a 180. I actually feel like the best use for it now is, based on what I've seen, is actually a private use, sorry, a public use. And I think we're already seeing people who are, you know, working in the community, volunteering in the community, coming up with better ideas of how to use that property. And, and, you know, and I not only do I not want to get in their way, I like want to amplify it and help out, however possible. Activating that space for arts, for, I know that you have a lot of work with the Historical Society. They have, there's some great ideas coming out of them, of ways of activating that building. Even honestly, just having it open to the public in the, on cold mornings, for people who commute, having somebody in there, you know, maybe selling coffee, it could be something simple, but having it activated to the public for their daily use in ways that make sense. But also, anything that incorporates the arts, you got me. And I think that some of the work that, you know, Mr. Laurie's been doing, along with the Little Theater of Stoughton, is honestly, they've taken it further than anybody I've seen so far, with some actual actionable ideas that made sense for the community. And so I would like to support that. I'd like to say that I'm personally willing to vote at this point right now, and say that I would like to see this used for a public use, that it incorporates the arts, history of the town, and other municipal purposes, maybe meetings or things along those lines, and that that's, that's ultimately, I think, the best use of that building.
Vice Chair Cavey.
Is that a motion, Steve?
If I could respond to Steve's, though, where you...
But can I ask this? I wanted to find one word that would include all of those different focuses. So is that community center?
Yeah, I think, I think having it as a community center, and we can, you know, be, I was actually a little bit hesitant about detailing it, because I didn't want to leave something important out. But those were the things that I've seen coming forward, that just, they, they make sense to me. And more importantly, people are actually willing to do the work. And I have not seen that yet in the private sector, there's no offense to them, maybe they're just not seeing the vision of it, maybe just the dollars don't quite add up, for whatever reason, like, no offense, but right now, public people in this town have stepped up in a big way to make that building useful and to get it open. And that's the, I think, the best direction. So we, I feel perfectly fine calling it a community center, if other people on the Board agree with that. I don't want to be too nuanced here, but at the same time, I just want to make sure it covers all the bases.
Community center is a great umbrella to those ideas that you just described. Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
Just, when the town manager asked me, because, you know, people know I'm a history nut, I've been involved for quite a while over at the Historical Society, and I asked him, you know, if he needed me to do it, and he asked me to take it and run with it. So since we had, the Board voted that as well, we got everything, there was some storage that was being, you know, some items in there that we got cleaned out, and we have the power on now, in the building, as I mentioned, to the Board. And I've been doing a lot of research, and there was a study done in the UK that hit everything that we want to hit for a community center. And there was ninety different ideas that were put down on the potential uses. And we should point out as well, is that we're making up for the agreement that the T made with the town in the late 90s, when that building was turned over to them. They were supposed to maintain it to the condition that they got it. And when we got it back, it was a toilet. It was broken down, I mean, it was in total disrepair. All the work that the people did in the 70s to get it on the Historic Register, National Register, Historic Places, it should be a disgrace. So we got the power on, we should have gas started within the next month, and that building will have an event at the holiday season. We will, after we get the gas up, they have to bleed the lines down, and there's only one person right now that can work on the furnace that's there, and he calls it the dinosaur. He said, I'll get that dinosaur running. And so we're pretty confident that'll happen. But some of the ideas, and what Steve had mentioned, about what the state's looking for, is something that drags people in, in as an anchor point to the town. We've talked about that before. And it will be an anchor point, because there's a use for every person that lives in this town. You know, cultural centers, you know, let's meet our neighbors. Where did you move here from? You know, how do you view Stoughton? You know, what can Stoughton do? A gathering point for everybody to come forward. Elderly, we had the senior citizens that used to knit and sell their products for their fundraisers, you know, in there while the people were coming in and out, you know, for trains. Once we have the heat, we can sell a card that allows people to come in, you know, a Stoughton resident free, out-of-towner gets a card, they can come in and stay warm. Then we can have Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, municipal groups, church groups, come in, and in where the office was, and it used to be the little coffee area, we set that up, and then let these organizations run it for thirty or sixty days, make a profit. Maybe we're selling pastries, maybe we're selling cookies, maybe it's hot chocolate or coffee. It changes up with the groups that come in. They all make a few dollars, it keeps it vibrant. We can have weddings in there, we can have community meetings in there, we can have, you know, anything that we want to do. Senior citizen book night, reading to children, celebrity guests that come in and run these story hours. There's so much we can do, but we have to have it rock-solid, that we want to keep this building in our town and make it work for us. You know, and it will, it will do that. It'll serve as the arts. When you have somebody like the Stoughton Little Theater, who's been doing this since the 60s, late 50s, you know, that is a perfect place for them. We have the Old Stoughton Musical Society, the oldest musical society in the entire country, can have concerts there, kids' shows, baseball sign-ups, I could go on and on. That will be the gathering point for our community. Doesn't matter where you come from, what you look like, who you worship, you know, I mean, that should be the place where everybody is welcome. Not the political seat of the town, the community seat of the town. That's what we need. And I applaud the town manager for getting this going. I had the opportunity to, to see Representative Phillips, we took him for a tour. Town manager, I did send you that study from the UK, I hope you got to read it. And it really, everybody else has done our work. There's rail money we can get. The T can give us grants. Conrail can give us grants. You know, there's so much out there, but we can't start until we do what we, in Stoughton, what we do, beat it to death. We got to get it to a point where we take a vote, we move forward, and we start working for the people in this town, versus making it a business that, who knows if it'll, you know? Let's give back to the people that pay the taxes in this town. That's one building that'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. The two Board members we have not heard from, Mr. Carrara and Mr. Gito. So, Mr. Carrara, do you agree or disagree?
I agree with Mr. McCrisky, because the night that Mr. Laurie came, his idea was good. I don't know if the name is right or wrong or indifferent, how people want to call it, but he had a great idea about, you know, having the arts in there. And I asked him if the schools would be welcome, because the kids that liked to put on the night they were here with us, they were very, very out there. And know why they act like that and show so good? It's because they're not at the school feeling that their teachers are watching them, and they're getting a grade on it. When they get to like an off-Broadway-type setup like that, the inner comes out in them. I mean, think about it, what I'm saying. When that kid was back flipping, and the other girl, and the kid was singing, and it was all going on at once. You didn't know what to watch. But that's what I thought. You get them out of the schools with what they've learned, now they go over here and the flower opens, and people get to see it. I'm not saying every night it's going to go on, but that's what I thought would really fit in there and stuff like that. So I don't know if the word "community center" opens up to too much. I don't know what the proper term is, maybe somebody else does, but I thought maybe the smaller the better, and then broaden out. But, you know, Joe's, he's got great, a great start. I mean, I remember when they offered us the train station, and it was, it was a wreck, and I says, you know what? You keep it. Because I was the chairman at the time, I says, I'm not burying this town in that thing. So they shut the doors, and it, and they didn't care about it either. And they didn't care about it so much, I said, you know what? Mr. Barrett, don't put one blade on the ground in there and plow that parking lot. You should have saw the heartache then. They had to come out from Boston, and they're taking care of it still, because you know why? Good for them, because we did it with our money and got nothing out of it. So I'm glad we're going to get something out of it now and work towards something. So that's...
Excellent.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, forgot my last one. The last, the last use was political boxing matches in the round area. Okay, we cordon that off, everybody puts their boxing gloves on, and we have people come in and take bets, because it's legal to bet now. Think of that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I think it should be, I think it should be noted, I think it should be noted that Mr. Carrera just demonstrated some deep feelings.
Deep feelings.
I think that should be noted.
They were real deep, right? We like it, though. We like it. Mr. ... Yeah, we love that, too. Mr. Gito, I wanted you to weigh in. Agree or disagree?
I, I guess if I were going to do something in the downtown, and expect a high return for that, I might look at the, at the Old Library, which is the Historical Society, and the Randolph Savings Bank property, as the beginning of maybe redoing that entire block between Pleasant Street and Seaver. That's what I would do. I have no problem with all of the other views that are expressed here. So I'm not going to say, oh, that's just awful, because it's not awful. But the space that we have there is not large. All of the things that we're talking about doing there could happen either at the library or the high school, if we wanted to do them there. It doesn't trouble me if we want to ask the Legislature to give us money to do something. It's a beautiful building. My wife and, and some other people, when we were younger, all did a lot of work to refurbish that building. Paid money to have other people do it. I didn't go in and do the painting and everything else. But, but we use that building a lot differently than, than it has been used since that time. It was used as a place for part of the town hall, town meetings or meetings to occur when the, when this building was redone. I have no, I have no problem with a discussion that's occurred. But if I were, if I were developing the downtown, and I were asking for money, and expected a high return for that, I would choose elsewhere. But that's, that's just, that's a different discussion than the one that we're having. We're saying, what can we best use that building for, so that we can go to the Legislature and tell them what we would use that building for, so that we can get money? That's a different, that's a different question than what is, what can we do to stimulate growth in the town? That's, that's where I am.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Are we ready for a motion? I'm open to accepting the motion.
Steve? He's the one that had the... Yeah, I'll hopefully make the motion to designate the use for the train station, to be used as a community center, with uses that are included but are not limited to arts, community gatherings, or something like that, historical display, education.
Longlist weddings, it was the 300th anniversary kickoff, it was just a lot.
Yeah, and any other use that...
Primer, you know, you could add the emotion.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Joe, can you get us a train, so we can run our own train?
Yeah, that's next.
And for any other public uses that benefit the community.
Thank you very much. Can I get a section, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion was unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving right along to a...
We have a two-minute break.
Two-minute break? Yes. The request of the Board, we're taking a two-minute break. Thank you.
What time is it now?
Eight fifty-two.
Eight fifty-two. We'll convene at eight fifty-four.
Hi. We're gonna, ready to reconvene again. We wanted to do a test of the sound system for SMAC. You can keep talking, I'm just doing my test. Test, testing. Testing. Oh, God, here. I call the meeting of the Select Board back to order at eight fifty-seven P.M. The next agenda item is number eleven, Stoughton Media Access Corporation License Renewal. We received some very concerning information. And with that said, I'm gonna turn the mic over to Mr. McCrisky because he's been working with our council on that information. And we have some questions, but you, we want you to set the tone and provide some context to the document we received. This is the first time we're discussing it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know that we don't have a scheduled meeting and this wasn't, it is not a public hearing. So I don't think we should be talking about this much, but to the point, as the board knows, I had asked multiple questions of the president of SMAC and to his credit, answered every one of my questions with, you know, attachments, minutes of meetings, documents, votes, everything. And with that, went over it, asked more questions, and then got to the point where it needed the legal look. And in the letters that everybody has the packet, and I will be making a motion as well, is that in this comment, to read it exact from Mr. Hewig, "It is my opinion that the current access agreement has terminated, and because of that, the town, acting through its select board, has the sole discretion to elect to not grant another extension without a showing of cause. Stated another way, the board is under no legal obligation to grant a renewal of the agreement. Accordingly, it is my opinion that the board has the legal right to sever its relationship with SMAC and to seek other arrangements for the provision of public, public access, productions, services, and if they should wish to do so." So there are some very serious areas of, we'll say, non-compliance, that, things that were in the, the access agreement that SMAC would do. They never did. And I think to, on the, on the issue of fairness and to have it as open a process as we should, with this information, I believe that SMAC should have the opportunity to review this, to work with their council, and to come up with a minimum of a corrective action plan or how they plan to address these concerns that are in this. And I would put in the, a motion, when, when you'll accept it, that we give SMAC fifteen days, you know, to take this and go over it. And they have all the information. Mr. Stagnoni, as president of SMAC, has a copy of all the emails he sent to me and all the emails I requested from him. So I didn't, I don't think we should be getting into a conversation tonight where we're not represented by council, yet SMAC has two attorneys here. So with that, that would be my motion, Madam Chairman, if you'll accept that.
Second.
If I get a second, we can have a discussion.
Second.
Okay. Questions? I saw Mr. Gito had his, his finger...
I do. We've been, this has been an item that we've been dealing with for two or three years. We just got a report this last Friday, and we're giving fifteen days for somebody to send a plan in. I asked a year ago for what the issues were to be dealt with. That was July twenty-sixth, I believe. I sent an email to then, no, maybe it wasn't then-chair, Mr. McCrisky, asking for the issues that he had in that six-inch packet of material. It took nine months to get this back. Maybe there are other ways to deal with this issue aside from giving fifteen days to respond. First of all, I think that the service that SMAC is providing to the community, not only to the town, but to the schools as well, is not bad at worst and better than not bad at best, much better. It's a service that the town needs. We want to communicate more broadly. We need to communicate more broadly. And we need to engage the other people in the town, the citizens of the town, in our decisions. This medium is a good way to do that. It's not the only one, but it's a very good way to do that. We seem to have established a, an adversarial position, which I do not understand. I do not understand. We've given one person the sole responsibility of looking at this.
Madam Chair, I have to interject. That is not a true statement by Mr. Gito.
It's not.
It's not. The board did not vote to give me this power to do anything. All right? These are questions I had as an individual member of this board, which I have the sole right to be able to ask those.
You do.
And as you recall, each member of this board has direct access to council. So with that, so that it couldn't be like it's already been accused of this board of playing politics, I removed myself from that and asked for professional agreement based on facts. Okay? That's where we are tonight. So I don't know where you're getting the adversarial unless the comments had been made to us about being political. This is fact-based. That's all there is to it. So I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. I appreciate that, that clarification. I really do, Joe.
Mr. Gito?
If there are problems, then perhaps there should be a little bit more time to deal with all of those, if they are in fact real problems. I think that, that having a dialogue about some of this is important. I, I just...
How much time do you feel is needed?
I would give at least a month or two to that.
Thirty days? Thirty days? Middle of the, middle of the road? Thirty days?
Forty-five. How about that?
Oh, you're getting the heavier end.
Yeah.
Split it back. So what do you want to say? Five weeks?
Sure. Five weeks.
I don't have a problem with that. I don't know if anybody here, I don't have a problem with that.
Right. And then...
In my job...
What I would, what I would like to see in those five weeks is not only putting together some response to this or a plan, but also to allow for dialogue to occur between some members of the board. I don't want to be part of that. Perhaps the attorneys on all sides. I mean, we had an attorney, Mr. Winter, saying that we could go ahead with, with signing a contract. We have Mr. Hewig saying, "We can't do that. We should do something else."
That's, that's not, that's not what he said, though.
Okay.
He didn't say...
He said, "We can..."
He said, "We have the right."
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Winter, Mr. Winter actually said that he, we should have Mr. Hewig here because this is what he specializes in. And I'll tell you right now, after this is done, I don't want to be involved either. Okay? And for the record, I mean, there would be people, and I've had it happen already, and it just seems to be a same few, and I won't say names, of throwing out the political thing. Okay? It's fact-based. If SMAC can address all these things, I would have no problem giving them a contract if they're gonna adhere to what they actually said they would do. That's the problem. There's so many things in here that they were supposed to have done and they didn't do. And I hope people come in here, flood town hall, asking for a copy of this to read it and read the facts.
They can just go online and, and read it anyway.
Well, good, I hope they do. I hope they do.
I mean, there's no question about that.
So that's, I mean, I'll support that. Five weeks?
And, and having...
Wait just a minute. Other board members have not had an opportunity to weigh in.
We haven't, we haven't had a discussion about that.
Excuse me, Mr. Gito.
No, I would like to just finish what I had, had started.
Okay, yeah, please finish and...
Sure. I will be happy to, if I could start.
With your thoughts.
If I could talk, I, I would finish.
Okay.
I would like the opportunity for the attorneys to get together with whoever, a member or two of the, of this board and, and some people on the, on SMAC, just to sit down and figure if you could work through some of the issues that are there so that we have sort of a, a discussion back and forth. I mean, the material that I've read would indicate that SMAC has been trying to, to have discussions with the board for some time. I'm, I'm not trying to take sides, I'm just saying...
No, we're, we're understanding.
Okay.
You said forty-five days, but I do want other select board members to weigh in as well. So we've all read the, the document. We, I don't know if you're concerned about it or not, but I would like you to weigh in on our next steps. Vice Chair, Kev?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I, I, I'll start by saying that, that I think it's, it's a, appropriate to allow SMAC an opportunity to address these, these concerns and to either, you know, just provide some additional information to help us understand them or, or remedy for any, any issues that have been identified. And offering them the reasonable amount of time to, to produce that, to, to work through the items methodically, I think, is, is fair and appropriate. I don't know what that, like, the time is. I don't think, I don't think, I think thirty days probably would do it. Fifteen's fine. I'm not trying to cut, you know, cut it short or make it harder for, for them. I want to have, make sure that they have adequate time to do the work they need to do. So if that's the case, I guess, out air on the side of, of giving them more time than less. I think forty-five days is perfectly fine. The meeting that occurs after that will, will revisit this. And it'd be nice if we could find, you know, some common ground, try to find some ways to work out, out issues. And, and ultimately for the, you know, the ratepayers to get the service that they're paying for is, and that we, we ensure that we're, we're providing that, that we have the appropriate oversight to make sure that, that they're being treated fairly and, and that their, their dues are, are being managed correctly. And I think the part of the work that Mr. McCrisky's done has been an effort to, to make sure that happens. And I think SMAC is also, they've been, have done tremendous amount of work for the community. And I personally found a lot of value in the, and in the, all of the endless work that a lot of volunteers put in here. So offering them an opportunity to, for rebuttal and for perhaps a chance to remedy any issues that we've identified, that'd be great. Ultimately, you know, if at some point we decide that, you know, there's, there's just, there's no moving forward or whatever, I'll be ready to have that conversation. I don't, I foresee us being able to find a resolution of this that will be advantageous to everybody. I think probably we'll all be a little bit healthier for having had this public conversation. So for whatever may be worth, everything Mr. McCrisky has, has requested, I find entirely reasonable. A forty-five-day opportunity for, for address, as recommended by Mr. Gito, sounds good to me, too. It might be worth asking members of SMAC if that, if that's adequate for them, if they need more time or less. Beyond that, you're not gonna get a fight out of me at this point. I think, I think, I think we're heading in a, in a good direction.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair, Kev. I'm in agreement with that, but I wanted to make sure that we hear all board members' comments and our, our town manager, Mr. Coulter, because he does work closely, well, with the SMAC staff and with the technology and tools. And let's not forget that he's a risk manager. That is within his wheelhouse. So, but before we go in that direction, I would like to hear from Mr. Carrera. What are your thoughts? So we're talking about an action plan to assign SMAC an action plan, allow them forty-five days, well, anywhere from fifteen to forty-five days to complete it, get back to us. And now I'm layering in on how we're gonna involve our risk manager, which is our town manager. Mr. Carrera?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to extend to Mr. McCrisky some thanks for putting all this together. Whether people like it one way or the other, I take it as it's insight. There's gotta be something wrong in some places and things gotta be fixed. I agree, thirty, Joe wanted fifteen, thirty would've been okay. You want forty-five, what's, what's the difference? It's all going in the same direction. SMAC has operated for a long time. I know the people that are on the, the board and stuff and they're running it. But it's getting to be like the MBTA. And the last letter in the TA is authority, which has been excluding this board. But Joe has brought information to us that we read and I'm... And I'm, I'm not here to make a decision tonight like, like Joe asked for, to let them come together and do things. But there's been a lot of, a lot of say around town. People can make faces and act like they don't hear it. But it's there. We hear it. You know of some of it. And I just hope it can get rectified. But it will be rectified because it's not going to drag out beyond those 45 days. Telling you now, even if I got to make the motion. We're here to do what has to be done. And it will get done. I assure you that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. Now I would like to hear from our town manager, Mr. Coulter. Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, I thank Mr. McCrisky as well for his work on this issue. And Scott, thank you for those comments. Well done. I think we have an opportunity here. I think the board has an opportunity here to demonstrate its real commitment, which I know is real, to deliberation, to deliberating on a problem. We had information that was supplied to us of some concerning issues. Retain counsel to do a very fair and objective analysis of the situation and produce a report. As expected, as required, it's been published to the public. The fact that, that this board, Madam Chair, is, is doing the right thing and asking the SMAC directors, managers to respond within 45 minutes to this report sets up a process for real, open, honest conversation. And that's what government is supposed to be. So I support everything the members of this board have said. I'm delighted to be able to end the evening agreeing with everything. It's, it's a great opportunity. I know SMAC will respond, the SMAC managers will respond point by point to that report. And then, as, as all the members have asked for, we can engage in a very open, honest, and public conversation about the key issues that are fact-based. I agree with Joe's point. There's nothing political going on. I've been briefed by all of the members on their position on this. There's nothing political. There is legitimate concern about the way an operation that the town is affiliated with is, is being run. But the group should have ample opportunity to respond, as you've all suggested. I think that's the right thing to do. I think that's the Stoughton thing to do. I think it's the proper thing to do. So I congratulate the board for taking that position and not rushing to judgment. But let's open the dialogue in the light of day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter. Now with that said, before we take a motion on that action, I would like to ask the president, John Stagnone, or you president, or you chair, I don't know what your title is. President John Stagnone, 45 days action. So on the table, the ask will be, in writing, for an action plan to address the issues and deliver it to us within 45 days.
Yeah, yeah, Madam Chair. John Stagnone, the president of Stoughton Media Access. Yeah, in talking with council, within 45 days, we'll probably be able to do it within the 15 days. We, we, 45 days is more than enough and we, we hope, we should be able to do it in 15 days in talking to council. So we're, we're going to get it done expeditedly because as everybody knows, or as Mr. Gito indicated, this has been going on for 19 months and we'd just like to get this out in the open and get it done. So that's good. We appreciate the time.
Thank you. Peter, Mr. Ventresco is raising his hand. He could not hear.
He can't hear him.
He cannot hear.
Said he couldn't hear.
Oh, you, it's not an open set. So thank you very much, President Stagnone. And please expect to receive a letter from us shortly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And with that, yeah, a motion. Mr. Carrera?
On, on Mr. McCrisky's motion, it was seconded. So are you going to take the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
We didn't, we didn't set the date as final. So who made the motion?
What's that?
Was it my motion?
Yes.
I didn't know if somebody else went.
No, no.
So I would, I would change that from 15 days to 45 days, Madam Chair.
Okay. Either Ms. Staden, Dolores, or Jilda, can you report, repeat the motion, please, so we can ensure we have it completely?
I would like to have Mr. McCrisky repeat it.
Oh, okay. I, I thought that would be the case.
Somebody didn't write it down, I guess.
Sometimes the acoustic doesn't come through correctly.
And I'll simplify that motion, Madam Chair, is that, that this board forward a request to SMAC Board of Directors and those who, under their, their organization, to respond within 45 days with their comments and/or corrective actions made that where they would undertake to address the issues outlined in the March 28, 2023 confidential attorney-client privilege sent to the board regarding Stoughton Media Access Corporation. And that we authorize our counsel, William Hewig of KP Law, to meet without calling for, you know, for our permission every time, that they be authorized through the town manager to set up individual meetings with the SMAC's attorneys as well in an effort to, to come up with some kind of an agreement.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Gito? Mr. McCrisky? I'm doing roll call vote.
Aye.
Vice Chair, Kevi?
Aye.
Mr. Carrera?
Aye.
And I vote yes as well. It's unanimous. So thank you very much. Is there any other business for the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good night, everyone.